Good evening. This meeting of the Winter Park Council for January 20th, 2015 is now called to order just for your information that this meeting is being recorded and may be televised live. Would you all please stand and join in the flag of allegiance. Counselor LeTiri?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. A moment of silence for John Murphy, one of our local firefighters retired, who was a firefighter in Winter for many years. John passed away. Excuse me, he passed away today, so if we could have a moment of silence. Sorry. Leo Murphy. His brother John passed away a while ago. Leo Murphy. Thank you. Denise, would you please follow along?
Counselor Calla, present. Counselor Sanford?
Yes.
Counselor Boncory?
Here.
Counselor Verone?
Here.
Counselor LeTiri?
Here.
Counselor Boyajin? Vice President Mayo? Counselor Davantos?
Yep.
President Gil?
Yes. Our quarter, Ms. President, and we'll move on to the next order of business. The minutes of the meeting as circulated. Could I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Counselor LeTiri, second by I.
I abstained because I was going to go.
Okay.
Second.
Second by Counselor Sanford. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Both unanimous and abstention by Ms. Calla. We want to take a move on to a discussion of the William P. Gorman Fort Banks Playground Proposal by Jim Fabiano.
Best place to stay right here?
Yep, sure.
Alright, so. Almost four months ago, my wife and I lost our youngest daughter. And she was born with a lot of disabilities, pretty much every disability you could imagine. She couldn't walk, talk, eat, sleep, breathe, see correctly. But one thing she could do, and she enjoyed, was being outdoors and going for long walks and things like that. So after she passed away, my wife and I decided we wanted to raise some money and donate it to the town in some way, something that would be good for children like her that have disabilities. So we decided that we wanted to do something in a playground, talking to some of the people in the community. We felt that we could go all the way and try to build a handicapped wheelchair-inclusive playground. Having an inclusive playground in the town is something we don't have right now. It's something that's needed in the town because there are plenty of children with disabilities in many different ways, whether they have Down Syndrome, autism, if they're in a wheelchair, whatever the case may be. So we decided that the Gorman Fort Banks Playground is the perfect spot for it. I believe the town has already approved to do over the soft surface and change the surface there, so we figured this is the perfect time to change the equipment as well. By putting it down there, it also is an asset to the town, but it's also an asset to the school. Having a playground like this in the school system gives the parents that have children with disabilities the comfort of knowing that the town has stuff like this for them. Having something inclusive where all the kids can play together is obviously something, if you look at my brother Frankie, how important it is. Building relationships at that, at a child level. Building those relationships, kids within disabilities and kids without disabilities, they grow up together. They grow up to be friends. They grow up to spend the rest of their lives together. If they're not inclusive and they're not playing together, they don't have those relationships and they don't have those futures together. By building something like this, it doesn't just help the child, it also helps the parent. It gives the parent some comfort knowing that, as a town, we're here to support them. So, we started fundraising probably about two weeks ago. I started an online account and on that online account, we're over $30,000 already. We got a $5,000 donation from Viking Pride and a $5,000 donation from Winter Charities. So that puts us up over $40,000 already. This diagram right here is the first design that we were able to come up with. And this is approximately $60,000, $65,000. And this is just the first, the first design. The concept behind this is all, it's all ramps. No stairs, so anybody with any ability, you know, whatever their disability is, will be able to utilize the park. This piece over here allows, it acts like a seesaw. It allows children with wheelchairs to be on it. Meanwhile, the other children can sit on the side and play together. So this is the first design. We'll make changes to it. Hopefully, we can raise more than what we expect and maybe add some special equipment to it as well. Richard, did you want to say anything?
Sure. President, I'm Richard Kauria. I'm 36 years old, from Winter Park. I have three children, who are currently in the Winter School system. One of them will be in the next year and a half. I go to the park, the parks and bike rides with my kids all the time. I can enter the playground, we have fun. There's still, I still, you know, do certain things with them. But there are things they do that kids in wheelchairs could not do. That what Jimmy is showing would just breaks down all those barriers and kids in wheelchairs could have fun with other kids that have no disability. And I think this is the perfect time to jump on a great idea and it's in memory of his daughter. I think it's a fantastic idea and it would show the whole town how committed we are eldred down to a project, to support a broad range of bike rides.
Thank you, Rich. Thank you, Jim.
And it also allows adults that are in wheelchairs to play with their children as well, for a lot of times in our unit.
Any questions for the council?
Yeah, just, could, is it on GoFundMe?
Yes.
So you would go to GoFundMe.com and it is front slash J-O-N-A-P-S. Or you can just Google Mariana Fabiano's Memorial Fund and you'll get to the GoFundMe page directly.
If anybody wants to send a donation and don't want to, doesn't want to go online to do it, they can send it to Mariana Fabiano Fund, P.O. Box 37, Winter Park, Mass. 02152. And that's the Viking Pride P.O. Box. They're letting us use it at the same time.
Counselor?
And Jim, when you were talking, I know you probably wanted to mention that when the children play side by side, they don't look at them anymore like they're different. They're, they're just kids and they're all kids and it would be wonderful to be able to have something like that. I'm 100% supportive of that and I think that that would be awesome. So what a great, great idea in memory of your daughter.
Jim, what are you looking for from the council?
Yeah, a couple of things. One, Jimmy's done a great job so far fundraising. It is getting to budget time of year, so we're going to come up with some numbers. But the park committees dedicated their much fundraiser to get this thing going and help Jimmy out and his family. I think it's a great thing. I think it's an asset to the community. It only enhances our community. As far as that goes, we're going to see what we raise and when we come back. The school has gave us their blessing, it's the school committee to use the area. And we're hoping that they'll contribute something, just like we're hoping the town will contribute something when we come up against it.
As Sean said, at the school committee meeting last week, there was a motion. And I would ask that under new business, unless somebody wants to do it, do it new business now. The motion that the school committee had was that the school committee endorses and authorizes the construction of a handicapped accessible playground at the William P. Gorman's Fort Banks Playground contingent upon approval of the final plans of the construction. I'd like to either now or later on in the meeting have somebody make a motion that the town council endorses, we can't authorize sort of that word out, endorses the construction of a handicapped accessible playground at the William P. Gorman Playground contingent upon the approval of the final plans for construction by the school committee. So I would make that motion under. Well, we need to, we need to jump ahead to new business if there's no objection? Okay, let me read the motion again. And who's making the motion?
Counselor Calla.
Myself.
Counselor Calla makes the motion, Counselor Sanford, second. The motion reads that the town council endorses the construction of a handicapped accessible playground at the William P. Gorman Fort Banks Playground contingent upon the final plans of construction, contingent upon approval of the final plans of construction by the school committee. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Yes, Jim?
This is fantastic, 100% behind it. My only question would be, was there any thought at all to, if you had younger families that wanted to use this during school time, they might not be able to at a school? Was there any thought to it like Ingleside or a different playground that they could access all the time?
Well, the parks committee has done an amazing job of doing pretty much every park over. I think every park is already done. So this is pretty much the last park anyway. But you're going to get so much more use out of this being attached to the school compared to occasionally someone being able to use it during school hours. You're going to have to hold somebody, you're going to have all weekend, you're going to have all the hours after school. So in my opinion, having it attached to the school is the perfect place for it.
I think there was also some opinion that being attached to the school, it'd be a little bit more controlled, a little bit more watch over than being left there. So is, there's no further discussion? Ms. President? Counselors? Ms. President? Pardon? How do you want, you want to do that now? Now?
It's all done.
Oh. You want to turn it on?
No.
Oh, okay.
I just put the website up there so people could see it. Mike can probably shine a camera on it and help the people in the audience.
If there's no further discussion? Ms. President? Oh, I'm sorry. We can take the floor right now, but I do want to throw one piece that I would put in half if not. There's, I'm not sure what the parking is at that location. If you can take a look at maybe a couple accessible spots dedicated for that, you know, sort of not on the other side of the building. I don't, I can't remember the exact roadway configuration up there, but you can maybe work, look at, try and work something in. I'm not sure if that, but it's the housing authority property. We have to lean on them to give us a little piece of real estate in order to get some accessible parking or whatever. You can take a look at that.
Are there any handicap spots there now?
I don't know. I can't, I don't remember the exact configuration up there.
They're over near the loop.
If we take a look and try and figure something out on that. If no further discussion, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, unanimous. I also would look to see if somebody would like to make a motion that the town council hereby transfers $10,000 to the construction of the proposed handicap playground at the Gorman Fort Banks School upon the approval of said project by the school committee. Source of funds to be determined by the CFO.
So move.
Yes.
Motion by Counsel LeTiri, second by Counsel Calla. Would the finance committee like to waive the?
We're to waive it.
So first, we'll take a motion for the finance committee to waive the rule, I believe it's 12(c). On the motion to waive the rule, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, unanimous. Now on the main motion, the town council hereby transfers $10,000 to the construction of the proposed handicap playground at the Gorman Fort Banks School upon approval of said project by the school committee. Source of funds to be determined by, source of funds to be determined by the CFO. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, unanimous. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you very much.
And Rich, I just have to say that the Fabiano family, we all know Frankie. Frankie had his fourteenth birthday a couple of weeks ago. But your mother and dad and Frankie are responsible for the inclusion of those kids in Winter. And if you go to the high school and see Mr. Donnelly's program, calling it Mr. Donnelly's, now Mrs. Boyajin's, that's, that's inclusion. If you looked up inclusion in the dictionary, there'd be Frankie, Dolores, Jimmy, and the whole Fabiano family.
So Frankie's taught us a lot. Yeah.
Yeah.
All of us.
Can I just make a comment, please? You know, it's interesting because it goes back farther than just a moment right now. My sister was also challenged and I remember when my parents discovered that and they found a particularly close bond with your parents. And I know they were very, very active in Winter for a long period of time. And some things are physical, like a, like a playground, but other things are emotional and spiritual. And your parents provided that and you've continued on. And that's a great, that's a great recognition of how to face lemons and turn them into lemonade. So I'm sure everybody on the council and the town looks up to you as a guiding light for that. And I know my parents always have been, so.
Thank you. It takes a lot of pleasure to be the voice of individuals like this. Rewards are made.
Thank you, Jim. Linda?
My name is Linda Prasaid. I'm the chairperson for the Winter Parks Committee.
Precinct three. Precinct three. You get to give your precinct, precinct three.
Precinct three. I'm the chairperson for the Winter Parks Committee, who is going right here tonight. And I want to take this opportunity to thank the entire town council for all the support you've given us over the last two and a half years. With the support of the town council, the Parks and Rec Department, Sean Driscoll and his crew, and Steve Calla and the DPW, we have been able to renovate Pico Park, Pond Street, and Cofflin Park in their view of all. We do have a little bit of work left to do on the Pond Street. We're not quite done yet there yet because we had to halt that project and pull all of Steve Calla's guys over to Cofflin Park because we had a drop dead date to spend that grant money. So we are going to circle back and finish Pond Street. But without the support of the entire town, we wouldn't be at this point. And I want to thank you as the Parks Committee. We want to thank you all for your, your thought and support for everything that you've done for us up to this point. And the town too. You know, we've, we've done a lot with private donations and fundraising. And Jimmy has just taken the reins and just run with this. And we're behind him 110%. And we want to thank you all too for all your support.
And thank you and your Parks Committee and our original chairman, Don Sullivan, for taking that support and picking up the ball and performing beyond all imagination or expectation with Steve and Sean's cooperation. It's really, really a pride what you've done. So thank you. Jimmy, thank you again.
Thank you, Jimmy.
Any further comments from the council for Jim? Or Rich? Rich, thank you. Our next order of business is, is it just? Our next order of business is the discussion of the fiscal year 15 real estate tax. And on the agenda, there's a typo and I'll take the hit for it. It says fiscal year 16 and it's really the fiscal year 15. Tonight's discussion will refer to the general information and how the tax rate and how the tax bills were arrived at. There won't be any issues discussed on specific properties. If you have questions on your specific property, then you go through the process of bringing that before the board of assessors. I'd like to take a moment before we start to reintroduce Steve, our new full-time assessor, deputy assessor, and our latest new member to the board of assessors, Diane Macken. And Chairman Alan Ouzi is with us as well. To try any reevaluation, as, I'm just going to sort of recap what the assessors told us a couple of weeks ago. It was based on calendar, 2013 calendar year sales in the town of Winter. The adjustments are made based upon the activity in various neighborhoods. We have various breakdowns, various areas in the town by which the reevaluation was done. Three years ago, we had some concerns about people, from people, that some people's taxes went up, some people's taxes went down. Well, the same thing happened this time. It's a balancing. We're in different districts, different values apply. Houses sell higher in one area than in another, but it's not necessarily the sale price that makes the difference. It's the difference in the, in the weight of the sale price. What happened last time was some of the areas that were low went high and some of the areas that were high stayed where they were. And that kind of flipped this time. So the process says that if you are concerned about either the amount of your property value, as set by the assessors, and approved by the state by the way, is of concern to you, then you go through a process. The process is you apply for an abatement. You must do it in the month of January, I think actually it's till February 2nd this year.
Yes.
But we always aim for the month of January to, to make sure that it's done on time. The process is you fill out, fill out an application and you tell, in the application, you state what is your concern based upon values of, of your value compared to other sale price values, correct? Or if there's been a correction that you think on your, on your record. The square footage is too much, the condition is too much, or whatever. You go to the board of assessors, they read your appeal, your application, and they make a determination. If they feel that it requires an inspection, then Steve would go up and inspect the property and then they would make the determination. Should you notice, and they were notified. At that point, people could come in for a hearing if they request, is that right now? And then if at the end you're dissatisfied, then there's the appellate tax board. So you will see that your property values made, property values for single families in Winter, I believe, went up 11.7%. That's good news. That means, that means that our houses are worth more than they were a year ago. If you go back four or five years, you'll see that values went down. Now they're starting to come up again. As the values go up, the, the rate goes down. Our rate went down from 1558 to 1434. So what you really need to look at is the difference in the tax bill. Difference in the tax bill tells you what, how much you went up. The average tax bill went up 2.7%. We're, we're 2.5 raising. So anyway, that's basically a quick summary. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Al, did you?
Well, I just want to make a couple of comments. When the bills come out in January, the first two quarters are estimated bills. They're not the actual bills and it's based on the previous year. So if there's a spike in, in this bill in January, that takes into consideration the two previous quarters also. So you have to add all four quarters together to come up with your yearly taxes that you're paying. Some people look at that bills as well, and went up $500, but that takes into consideration the two previous quarters that we were paying on the, on the previous year's bill. And when people go through the abatement process, if they want to file for an abatement, the owners is on the homeowner to furnish the board with documentation and information as to why they feel that they're being over assessed. And it's very important, if your style of house is a ranch, if you're looking at your neighbor's house that's a colonial, you have to be very specific on the style you're looking at to compare your property to. And if you live on Port Road and you're looking at a house on, say, Shirley Street as a comparable seal, you have to be in a similar neighborhood also. So there are a lot of factors that go in. And like I said, the owner says on the homeowner to furnish us with some kind of information. Not just say, my taxes are too high. You have to have a, a, no, a good reason why you feel they are.
Any questions or comments from the council? Okay. If that's, you guys for coming in. Again, for the public, if you have any concerns based upon what we talked about, you feel free to file a request for an abatement. Again, the important piece is that you provide the documentation, but more important is the timing. After February 2nd, no matter how good your case is, it cannot be appealed. Okay, thank you, Al. Thank you, Diane, and welcome to you and Steve both.
Peter? I just want to recognize Scott Consella for the good job he's done while he was on the board.
Thank you.
You know, it was a tough year and he was juggling, you know, family and, and work and the board, so.
Thank you. I'm glad you mentioned that. Scott Consella had to, had to resign from the board due to work commitments.
He did a good job.
And he's done a great job and we appreciate what he did.
Thank you. Thank you.
Public hearing. We have a public hearing on a motion that the town council vote to approve the transfer of $57,950 in capital reserve from the purpose of matching CZM grant for Lewis Lake tide gate engineering, attempting action there too. We'll open the public hearing on that matter. Is there anybody that would like to speak? Anybody from the audience that would like to speak in favor of that matter? Or opposed to that matter? Anybody from the, Steve, did you want to speak to that?
I can certainly give you a quick description of what it is. It's, the town secured a grant to engineer a new tide gate at Lewis Lake as part of the drainage project that we're trying to get completed down there. So this is a, a match, a, I don't have the exact number. It's 57,000 is the match. I believe we're getting 230,000.
That's the total product cost. It's 173, which is the total of the grant.
So this will be the, the engineering of the tide gate and then we'll be submitting a, a second grant for the construction of the tide gate.
Thank you. Any? Yes, next one. Counselor Davantos.
The finance committee did meet on this tonight and recommended positive approval.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else nut? We will close that public hearing and move on to a continuation of the public hearing for the SDOD at 60 Herman Street. 60 Herman Street SDOD has had a public hearing with the planning board, public hearing with the council, and at the public hearing with the council, two weeks ago, the last council meeting, the public hearing went on for about an hour and a half. And then at the end of the public hearing, it was by motion by Counselor Boncory, the public hearing was continued until tonight. Is there any further comment on the public hearing on the SDOD for 60 Herman Street?
I would make a motion that we further continue this matter until after the precinct meeting that is going to be held by Counsel Verone. And then it is coming back to the rules committee and public safety committee for another meeting. And I suggest we continue this until both meetings are done.
Dave, but do we need to continue the public hearing? Like, can we consider this public hearing over because we're going to have other meetings?
I think we should. I'd like to continue the public hearing.
We'd like to continue the public hearing to a time to be determined.
Because when we come back with our recommendation, I'm sure the public will want to.
Okay, we will continue the public hearing to a date that we don't have, to a date in the future.
Future date.
To a date in the future, okay. Given that, I do have a couple of correspondences regarding that, that I guess I will read under correspondence as long as we're going to continue on. Well, you know what? I'll read them here because we're in, we're in the public hearing. This is from Lane Regency Management. They're the owners of the Pillow House Apartments. Regarding, I'm writing regarding the proposed construction of the project at 60 Herman Street, which is under your review, the property, but it's our property, on Walden Street, the Pillow House Apartments. Sorry to be writing at this late date, however, if we were notified of this project as a butter, we did not see it. I would like to mention several areas of extreme concern which would negatively affect our property. The information indicates that there may be construction of a parking lot at the rear of the property. Looking at the site, I can only imagine this happening if a very long and high retaining wall were to be erected directly in front of the back of our building, blocking vision from our 15 apartments that look out in that direction. This would be on site, adequately reduce the value. This would be on site, adequately reduce the value of these units and affect our property negatively. Should this scenario be true, also please consider the potential danger of having cars parked in an extremely elevated location. Looks to me like the wall would have to be 20 feet high. Will some kind of fencing keep the cars from rolling off the cliff? I can only imagine a high fence on top of a high retaining wall for our tenants to look at. This could possibly render those apartments unrentable. In addition, all N-Star electrical lines for our 90 units are located on the telephone poles stationed along the rear of the property. Any development plans at the property must consider its proximity to the live wires. New development is located closer to our property. Because of the elevated nature of the lot, the location of the parking lot slash building would definitely be higher than those live wires, and could constitute a tremendous danger. I'm also fearful the possible change in storm drainage patterns that this project may create. Our building already sits at the base of a storm drain the town put in during the construction of the coming school, and were affected by the flooding on Walden Street, especially during high tides. So I cannot have the back of this building in danger of flooding as well. I ask that you please consider our fear of flooding. The closed condo building is located toward the rear of the property, parking in front of the same issues of concern. What our tenants be looking at is the proximity to electric wires. Are they safe? Where is the storm drain? And will it change the top, will a change in the topography be safe? As an embodiment of the proposed development, I formally oppose any zoning or other town ordinance exception that may be considered for this project, and ask that you consider the scope of the project as relates to the issue. We then got a correspondence from a group that's calling themselves Say Yes to Condos at 60 Herman. I am also your neighbor, I am your neighbor, also a landlord who rents out an apartment, and I do not have a driveway for them. My tenants rely on parking. After educating myself on what will happen if the condos don't go there, prompted me to write this petition. The condos will be four to five units with two parking spaces in back for each one. There should not be a huge issue to us over parking. I've been told that if it's not condos, then it will become a public forum, example, church or another playhouse, or maybe a halfway house like the old nursing home on Pleasant Street will be because of the neighbors don't want condos. So I beg of you, please find out about this more at the next meeting, or please sign this petition. So this person put this petition out to the neighbors, and the neighbors, I don't have the signatures, but I have their typewritten names, and it's Norrane Dean Halou and Zauhaya Ubrit, Chris Luongo, Flanard Schlischla, Joanne Schlischla, and Robert Atari. I will refer these to the Rules and Ordinance Committee and Public Safety Committee. Council President? Who is the author of that? The first name, which is difficult to, Bill, can I just have that back?
Norrane Dean Halou.
And the address is on Belgium?
15 Belgium.
15 Belgium. Thank you. Okay. So the public hearing is continued to a time to be determined. Moving on to public comment. Moving on to the correspondence, which I just read, and then there was another one. Petition from the PJP Realty Trust LLC. To amend the town of Winthrop zoning map with respect to 17 Walden Street, Winthrop, Massachusetts. This office represents the legal interest of PJP Realty Trust LLC. Enclosed, please find a petition submitted, to be submitted to the Winthrop Town Council to amend the town of Winthrop zoning map as to include the real property located at 17 Walden Street, the premises, within the special development overlay district, SDOD, as provided for in section 17.48.012-0 of the Winthrop Town Code. From a procedural perspective, and they outlined what the procedure is, basically, it's an application for an SDOD of the building and property located at 17 Walden Street. And we'll talk about that later on in the business. Committee reports. Council of Delvanto.
The finance committee met tonight, and we met at 6:30. President and councils, Luteri and myself, and the committee also, president and councils, Calla, Mail, Council President Gill, Tim Gordon, and Steve Calla. Presentation of the need for additional engineering for the Winthrop Street project of $15,000, which is a capital reserve transfer, it's an expenditure item. That's the additional engineering for, to complete the 100% phase of Winthrop Street project. Does recommend, I came out of committee with the positive recommendation. There's also presentation for a transfer of 57,950, the purpose of matching the CZM grant, which town manager I hit on a little while ago, I think we'll go into more detail on later, for the engineering of Lewis Lake tidegate. And that project was also recommended for positive approval.
Thank you. Councilor Boncorrie for the Rules and Ordinance Committee.
Yes. The Rules and Ordinance Committee had a joint meeting with the Public Safety Committee last Tuesday. Meeting was called to order at 7:02. President and myself chairing the meeting. Also chair of the Public Safety Committee, Lyndon Calla, Councilor Delvanto, Councilor Verone, Councilor Boyeje, also present in the audience were Council President Gill and Councilor Mail. The first order of business on that evening was discussion about Herman Street condo process that's going on at 60 Herman Street. Attorney Richard Lynn's recommending the developer, representing the developers, and the developers were there. There was, we read the recommendation of the planning board into the record, as well as the petition from 29 residents. We allowed Council Attorney Lynn to tell us about the project, what he was going to do with it. He was asked numerous questions, first by the council. He was asked questions about the preservation of the property, the process that was going on, and what they planned on doing there. There were quite a few different things that were put forward, possibly depending on whether or not they got the SDOD, and how many units they put in there. They were talking about being able to put in 12 parking spaces, maybe four, five, or six condo units, depending on whether they were one bedrooms or two bedrooms. There was a lot of discussion on what would happen if it was not allowed. Also, in the audience, we had many speakers. There was Joan Sisler, one of the people who just set that new petition, and John Catamalo, Kathleen Hansen, Kelly Flaherty, Alan Perullo, Council President Peter Gill, Gil Kleinas, Frank Davis, Councilor Lyndon Calla, and Craig Mail also spoke. Questions were asked and hopefully answered by the people that were pushing the project forward. I think there were a lot of questions that were asked by the audience, and they got some of the answers soon, of course, not knowing whether the SDOD is going to go forward. Council Veroni, at that time, and I love to use that term, Council Veroni, made a motion to table our meeting, committee meeting, on the 60 Herman Street project until he is able to have a precinct meeting. And I believe that precinct meeting is being in the works, and as notice is, it's going to go to the precinct members. That motion to table in committee, and to keep it in committee, was seconded by Councilor Nick Delvanto. The second issue on that joint meeting was houseboat use. And we had quite a few of the people that are living on the houseboats attend the meeting. There were seven or eight people. They informed us that their attorney is Attorney James Sippaletta, and they have three liverboats that are going on now with seven, eight people in them. They have five houseboats, and during the season, they had two more. We had questions from the council as to whether they were being used for commercial basis, and they were. Present on the houseboats were Jim Shattuck, John Dolan, and Jim Dolan, who owns the Blue Pearl. There was great discussion about what taxes they should be paying, and we were informed that they are paying excise taxes to Winthrop for their cars and their boats, that they are paying fees to the condo association, and so on. Councilor Mail.
The marina.
The marina. That they were paying to the marino, who's then currently paying taxes to the town. Councilor Mail had a lot of questions as to the marina having violated some rules, and he felt that it was an illegal operation. Right now, the boats are being taken care of, I believe, by outside hired vendor that comes to clean out the boats. We were given a presentation by the planning board, which is about 16 pages long, things that we have to look at. To determine that, this two joint committee should write some rules and regulations for these houseboats, including definitions and so on. We figured to do that with the amount that has to be done with the different classes of boats, the different issues, is probably going to take until May. So there was a motion to table by Councilor Delvanto, and seconded by Councilor Veroni, to table the issue in committee and have monthly meetings preparing a set of bylaws and regulations for these houseboats to add to our houseboats. Motion to adjourn the joint meeting by Councilor Calla, and seconded by Councilor Veroni, and we adjourned that meeting at 9:50. And then we began the regular Rules and Ordinance meeting at 10 o'clock. Present for that meeting were myself, Councilor Boncorrie as chair, Councilor Verone, and Councilor Delvanto. Also attending were Councilor Calla and Councilor Mail. There were two issues before us. One issue was the sale of land on Veterans Road. We did not get any new measurements. We did not get a copy of a purchase and sale agreement. So that was again tabled. So that motion was tabled by Councilor Verone, seconded by Councilor Delvanto. The second issue was a discussion of changing the council rules. And there was a motion to update the rules by deleting entire section seven of the rules and adding a new section seven, which is an actual rescript of section 21 of Mass General laws 38. And then this new law that was passed in July of 2010, enumerates the reasons for going to executive session. The ones we had were very, very close, there were only one or two lines that were changed, but the actual section of law was changed, because it's now section, Mass General laws 38, section 21, and all of our references were section, to section 23, which was the old law, but from when we first wrote the laws. So I will be making a motion to do that under new process. We adjourned 10:15.
Thank you, Councilor Boncorrie. Go through the chair. Town manager's report, Mr. McKell.
Yes, thank you. Good evening. Just to give you a quick update of some of the things that we've been doing the past week. I met with Commissioner Murray of the Department of Conservation and Recreation. That's the Commonwealth steward of public lands in Massachusetts. And we discussed a project that has come to light for DCR, and it was very important to them because they had included a portion of this project, the Veterans Road, Lewis Lake tidegate, and as we mentioned earlier, the drainage challenges of this area, originally as part of the beach project, but because of scope and budget issues with regard to the beach project, this aspect of the, of that project was not pursued. And so I have been pursuing it with, together with Director Calla, and with significant support and encouragement from Speaker Belio. And so we had a very progressive meeting, I believe. The DCR appreciates the effort we're making in reviving this project and understands the importance of it environmentally, and also for the improvement of drainage and the protection of public health in the area. As you may know, or recall, we had some unfortunate incidences of West Nile virus being detected here a couple of years ago. So it's important that we address this problem of standing water and make that drainage design function again, as it has not been functioning for many, many years. And so we hired Woodward and Curran, the engineering firm that helped us with Ingleside, to essentially, you know, do some of the same things that they've done in Ingleside to the benefit of that neighborhood, and apply them here to Veterans Road. And so we're developing those plans, and it's hoped that we will be getting some support from the Commonwealth to fix this project. And I wanted to inform the council that we will be applying, in fact, it was due today, for a social worker for the town. As you know, as it is the priority of the governor, so is it a priority of this community to address some of the same issues that the governor has outlined in terms of opioid abuse and addiction, and the impact that that has on a community. Quite often, it goes undetected, you know, it is a problem that we have been willing to talk about for some years now. And in fact, we've led the conversation on the North Shore, meeting with other communities, and joining forces with Revere, and Saugus, and a few other communities to develop some regional strategies on opioid abuse, and try to redirect folks regarding that. And so what we've discovered is that it really needs a hands-on approach. It's not good enough to just sort of meet as communities and talk. Really is appointing someone in charge and follow-through, boots on the ground, if you will, on dealing with these issues, helping people work themselves through to a better place, and all that that might encompass. And so we need someone similar to what we do with Veteran Services. We need somebody who will address these issues and work with families to deal with the multitude of challenges that come with this problem. And we understand that this approach actually has begun in a few other communities, and we intend to learn from them, but we think it's important that we dedicate some resources. So we've applied for this grant through the police department to, and we hope, to the Office of Public Safety, we hope that we're successful with it, but I wanted to inform you that we were doing that. I do have some initial concerns about our, as we prepare our FY '16 budget, that I have heard a fairly strong rumor that the health insurance expenses this year will be substantially increased due to having to compensate for some state and federal mandates on health insurance. So I think we should not expect a kind of rate, you know, impact that we've seen over the past few years in the 1% and 2% adjustment. We may see something in the order of, you know, 5, 6, 7, maybe higher percent increases. And that's money that comes right off the top, because that's a fixed cost. So we will, you know, that really takes a lot of oxygen out of the room, you know, when we try to plan our budget. So I just wanted to give you a little heads up on that, and we'll be paying attention to that issue, particularly Friday, when we go to the MMA and see if there's further discussion about that.
Counselor?
What's the total? What does 5, what does 1, what does 2% cost? What is 10%? I don't know what the line item budget is on that.
The, a 4.5%, 5% would be in the range of $300,000.
So $300,000, okay.
I did meet with the Library Board of Trustees last week, discussing the direction of the library and the planned hiring process for a library director. That process is ongoing now and progressing well, and hopefully within the next few weeks we'll have a candidate for appointment as library director. I attended an economic development training seminar in Danvers to understand better some of the latest incentive tools from the state to encourage economic development and job creation, because I'm hopeful that we can start to look at those things and take advantage of them as we look at some of these new developments coming. of them as we look at some of these new developments coming to Winter. I want to be able to certainly see if there's opportunity there for us to, if we can offer some incentives to improve a particular area of town, then we should pursue that. And I want to, I was very pleased by the breadth of the seminar. It was detailed, and, you know, it's something that's within our reach if we choose to examine it. It's more in terms of, if you want to say do a mixed-use project and you want to see a certain elements to the project and the proposer is not featuring those elements well, you can do some things that incentivizes the creation of those aspects if you want to, such as infrastructure improvements, parking facilities or what have you, street improvements, curb improvements, and things like that, and do them in a way that's built into the financing of the project. So all that kind of stuff is what we're examining, and I certainly think that, you know, we should be well-thirst in those issues should we see opportunity come our way to take advantage of them. Wanted to inform the council that the Feldman Apartment ribbon-cutting is on Thursday morning, and that's, you know, to the credit of the entire town and neighborhood and everyone involved. You know, again, another example of quite an accomplishment for the community. So we'll be celebrating that on Thursday. I attended the ferry compact meeting at the Mass DOT. All those communities that have ferries get together every quarter and exchange information, issues, challenges, and what have you. And I'm happy to report that a lot of folks are, you know, pursuing ferry service and are in a similar situation we're in. And so now we're speaking as one voice to folks like Senator McGee, who is in the room, who's the chairman of the Transportation Committee in the Senate, and others who understand that ferry water transportation is very important and vital, particularly if we have visions of Olympics or any of that nature, or just more economic development on the Boston waterfront and around the region. And so, you know, but every community who is seeking ferry service or operating ferry services is similarly challenged by, you know, trying to keep rates reasonable and operating costs to a minimum. They're looking for subsidy. And so it's important that we're in that conversation with this group of communities. Lynn started a ferry service. They're looking to keep that going. Gloucester, Salem, Quincy now is looking at service once again. So the more we talk about it and the more we meet together and share information, the more we have strength in numbers to hopefully be on the radar with regard to the whole transportation plan and the Commonwealth and advocate for resources. I'm also meeting with someone who, the Hull Community Development Director, who wrote the business plan for the Hull Ferry Service, which carried over two hundred thousand passengers last year. And he's willing to come up to Winter and sit down with me to start the process of developing a business plan for Winter. So it's a place where we can, you know, seek help and get some input from people who've done it and done it right. And so I wanted to inform you that that's the kind of relationship we're going to build as we plan that service. Yes.
I was just curious how the progress is coming with the new ferry.
It's being built. We've had, yeah, the plans were approved, you know, months ago, and we've, we're due to receive our first request for payment on that based on progress. So we're looking for that in the mail.
They have like a date when they think it might be finished?
You know, it's in Maryland, and, you know, you might, on your winter sojourns, swing on in. Yeah, they will be. They'll send us progress notes. But it's right on the water, so you might want to pull in and have a look.
Town's excited. I mean, we'll get people that are.
Will they allow us to write up from the?
Yeah, great. So, yeah, we're paying attention to that. And also, operationally, it's going to be, you know, somewhat of a challenge for us to inculcate that operation within the harbor of operation of the town. So we're working on, teasing on some of those issues. That's my report.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Yes.
So I know we've done a good job on the Airbnb thing, but it's a never-ending battle because there's, I think, seven of them listed with rooms tonight. And we go on the websites and, you know, so I think we should go, we should go on the website and request a room and then put down that you are the person who wants it and let them, you know, question back and forth, because if we're going to have, if we're going to let it happen, then we let it happen, but if not, it's not fair to the people that have gone through the process and done it properly. And one of the things that I think was important about your meeting that came out was, one, a different perspective, but the other thing was is that those people aren't moving. And I know there was some discussion around town. People thought that those boats were moving out, and these people clearly stated, and I think Ashley should be part of your report, these people clearly stated that they're here to stay.
Did they say why they're here to stay? They have the option to go to Charlestown?
Because they like it, you know. They just, can I tell you something? These people are, they just like it. Would you say anything else? I mean, they just like it.
That's the way they like it. They want to live in the boat. They like it. They want to be part of the community. They want to be welcome. It's the degree.
Some have registered to vote. Some have taken appropriate residence and voting out of it.
Okay, through the chair. Anything else?
No, I just, I just wanted to say that, you know, I think we should continue on the path. We have to get an ordinance set up because, you know, we, I mean, I think it was a rather insightful look into the process. So we'd have to set up the rules and get it squared down. Same thing on this Airbnb situation, so we get it locked down. If we're going to let it happen, then, you know, we have to, we have to have set up rules around it.
Counselor?
And on the Airbnb thing, I haven't talked to him for a while, but Boston City Council's Salim Teen is very aggressive on some type of work with them. I don't know if you've been in touch with the council's office or not, but he may be a good resource because we have the.
We understand that many communities in Boston, almost every single community has been affected by this issue. Places like, you know, Dedham and West Roxbury and, you know.
Council, he's very concerned about what's going on at the heights right now, so I know he may be able to, some information sharing to help us.
Okay, all set. Moving on to the school department update. School department update for this week. Schools committee announced that they have established an SAT prep course. They're running it based on a grant from Viking Pride plus a tuition from the students a hundred dollars, which was formerly two hundred and fifty dollars. And that's taking place after school on the students' own time, being taught by Winter teachers, funded by Viking Pride and the hundred dollar tuition. I think a great move forward. They also have an academic grant for MCAS prep, which is taking place twice a week before school. So those couple of big, I believe, academic movements there. They also have started their budget process. They've had their first budget subcommittee meeting, and they, I'm sure, will be attending the Finance Commission's meeting that's coming up Thursday of this week. Peter Gobio, the A.D., is retiring after many years of service as a Winter School teacher and then as athletic director. Part of his responsibilities as athletic director was he was also transportation coordinator. He was a department head. What they've done is they've now filled those three positions effective February first on an interim basis. They're going to redefine the A.D. job, the athletic director job, and probably separate those other two things out so that the A.D. job will again return to a full-time position like it was before. I want to ask Councilor Leteri if he will just update us on the school building assistance and the progress on the new building.
All right. School Building Assistance Committee met on the fifteenth, and it was a relatively brief meeting, but a lot of excitement about the stale being delivered to the town, which was delivered, I think, last Tuesday. The stale is a ten-week project. There was some discussions with Massport concerning the height of the crane that's down at the site, at the high school site. I think the original crane was a hundred and sixty feet. Massport thought that was a little high, and it ended up being a hundred and forty feet, which does not affect the project in any way, shape, or form. The stale is going up at a very fast pace. The anticipated date that the stale would be done is March fifteenth. Everything else is going according to plan so far. The town has been reimbursed, I believe, five point eight million dollars from the MSBA. Is that accurate?
To date, yeah, just under six million.
Just under six million in reimbursement. We've also been in contact with MSBA, who will start visiting the project and inspect the site on a regular basis. Other than that, the other discussion was on possibility of installing security cameras at the site. You know, nobody wants anything taken from the site. There's a lot of, steel is valuable and whatever else might be there, so. There was discussion about installation of security cameras, and that's it, but everything seems to be progressing very well. Everything's on schedule and on budget.
Thank you, Counselor. Moving on, old business.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead.
Because I don't, they have started to put the stale up, and there were quite a few pieces that are already up, and it looks like it's going to go quickly. Have they resolved the issue of putting Winter people to work there? Get any account as to whether or not, is any percentage of what people are working on the project?
No, I have not received. And we have asked, we have inquired and have yet to have any answers from them on that.
I think we still got to push on that.
Yeah, I agree.
We took care of that?
Yes.
Thank you. Any further questions on school department update? Not moving on to old business. Councilor Delvento?
A motion from the Finance Committee, move that the town council vote to approve the transfer of seven, fifty-seven thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars from the Capital Reserve for the purpose of matching the CZM grant, which is Coastal Zone Management, for Lewis Lake Tide Gate Engineering. Let's take any other action relative here, too.
Coming from committee, there's no second, no need for second. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, the main motion, I move that the town council approve the transfer of fifty-seven thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars from Capital Reserve for the purpose of matching the CZM grant for the Lewis Lake Tide Gate Engineering. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, unanimous. Councilor Leteri.
A motion from the Finance Committee that the town council vote to approve the transfer of fifteen thousand dollars from Capital Reserve to DPW expenditure line zero one nine six zero five two dash five eight eight zero two three for the purpose of finishing the Winter Street corridor phase-one engineering. Going to take any other action relative here, too.
Coming from committee, there's no need for second. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, the motion that the town council vote to approve the transfer of fifteen thousand dollars from Capital Reserve to DPW expenditure line zero one nine six zero oh five two dash five eight eight oh two three for the purpose of finishing the Winter Street corridor phase-one engineering. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, unanimous. Continued discussion, there is no update on the property located at one forty-two Pleasant Street, upon the government of Mercyville. There is a request to review the minutes of May twenty-first, two thousand and thirteen, and just make a correction. The motion was to waive rule two nine C, and it should have read to waive rule twelve dash C. Could I have a motion to amend the minutes of May twenty-first, two thirteen, under new business, motion by the Finance Committee to waive instead of two nine C, twelve C?
Make the motion.
Motion by Councilor Delvento, seconded by Councilor Sandberg. Any discussion on the motion? Tim, does that? Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed, unanimous. Okay, new business. That six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, this is a motion, a request by the town manager, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars is appropriated for the purpose of financing sidewalk improvements in the Cottage Hill surrounding area and Pico Beach surrounding area, including all costs incidental or related thereto. To meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the town manager is authorized to borrow six hundred and fifty thousand dollars and issue bonds or notes to the town under Chapter Forty-four of the General Laws or any other enabling authority, but the treasurer with the approval of the town manager is authorized to borrow and apply for any grants or aid available for the project. And the financing thereof, which grants and or aid should be expended for the project in a debt amount appropriated and borrowed under this order, and that the town manager is authorized to acquire by purchase, eminence, or manner otherwise such rights, titles, easements as they may be necessary for such purpose. To abandon such rights, titles, and easements as they are no longer required and to expend all funds available for the project, take any other action necessary or convenient to carry out the project. Mr. McKenna, could you give us a comment?
Yes, I believe that a number of councilors have actually visited the Contract Four area with Director Calla recently and have reviewed the particulars of what is being requested. There was some interest initially in including all of the sidewalks and all incidentals thereto as part of the improvements in the area, as we do the road and sewer and waterworks in the area as well under the Contract Four. This also, Contract Four also includes another Pico area as well. But this is really mainly focused on addressing some of the incidentals to the project where we're looking to really leave the best we can leave behind in terms of impact for the neighborhoods involved. And I believe there's an inventory of particular areas that'll be addressed with, so noted on Steve's plans. And, you know, Steve has run the numbers on these as he has with the engineering firm and has estimated that this is what we take to really leave the best impression we can once we go through these neighborhoods. Many of you have seen the work we've done on Walden Street, you know, consistent with the level of how we've, and Reed Street and that area. You know, we hope to leave every place we go into, which is a substantial disturbance to the area, leave it better than, the best we can. And so the effort is to really, for the long term, improve to a design standard that I think calls for appropriate curving, appropriate width, appropriate dressing of the sidewalks, egresses, you know, adequate handicap access, and all the things that are necessary to make sure that by the, at the end of the day, we're proud of what we've done in these neighborhoods. And so this is the additional resources that we need to put that level of effort into the project. And so I believe there's been a consensus among, you know, DPW Subcommittee with the council and, you know, certainly with the input from the director, that it's time, you know, if we want to do it right and get it right, we need to fund it appropriately.
Any comments from the council?
Well, this is going to need a public hearing. It's also going to be a finance committee. I make the motion now instead of the Finance Committee, and this way here, because there are a whole series of items that are going to be referred to Finance on tonight's agenda. This does need to be advertised for the next meeting.
Okay, motion by Councilor Delvento to refer it to Finance. Do you want to set up a public hearing before Finance or not?
I'm going to be away next week, so unless Councilor Leteri and Bouaz can have the meeting without me, we may have to wait until our next meeting, our second meeting in February.
Is this time? Can I hit pause for fifteen seconds? So we'd be okay if you wanted to wait for the return to have the meeting?
Do you want us to schedule a public hearing for next meeting, or do you want to wait till after you have a final?
Schedule it for after the second meeting in February.
Second meeting in February?
February 17.
Okay. So that's referred to Finance and for public hearing on February 17.
Thank you.
And on the February 17th, you'll be ready to be reported.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. On the next several motions, Chairman Delvento, do you want to make a group motion to refer those? Or do you want to do them individually?
I mean, for expedition, if everybody, if we're willing to just read the motions, but point of order by Councilor Verone.
What's that?
Can we, are we gonna take these all as a group? Are we gonna individually vote on the motion?
I think they all have to be sent to Finance. We could do, we could individually send them to Finance, or we could make a motion to send the next five, was it one, two, three, four?
Two, three, four, five.
Five items to Finance. Do you want to do them individually? I'll do them individually.
Like to make a group motion?
All right, we have a motion by Councilor Verone to refer the next five items to Finance. And I'll just read the items, and then we'll refer off of them. Motion that move the Town Council to approve the transfers are: From Fund 710 Working Men's Comp Special Revenue $3,299.93. From Fund 713 Unemployment Special Revenue $6,689. From Fund 659 Health Clinic Reimbursement Special Revenue $926.28 totaling $10,915.21. Moving those funds to Fund 585 Solar Energy Special Revenue $9.10. To Fund 519 North Suburban Home Special Revenue $9,979.83. To Health Medicare Reimbursement Special Revenue $926.28 totaling $10,915.21. So that's basically, and for the purpose of closing prior year, fund deficit balances, that's transferring $10,915.21 from various accounts to various accounts. The next one is that the Town Council approve the transfer of $150,000 to Fund 19, to Fund 900 Water Meter Upgrade Project for the purpose of funding the radio reading disc MWRA project in the Water Enterprise Fund 902. The next one is to move that the Town Council appropriate from Rink attained earnings the amount of $30,844 to fund Rink contract services for the purposes of necessary repairs to the much equipment. The next is the Town Council vote to approve the transfer of $6,000 from Inspectional Services Personnel 012-4151-511100 to the Health Department Personnel 0151051-2511100 for the purposes of funding the departmental budget through June 30. Motion that the Town Council vote to approve the transfer of $10,000 from Inspectional Services Personnel 012-4151-511100 to Town Manager Contract Settlements 011251-511109 for the purpose of funding contract settlements. Motion by Councilor Verone, seconded by Councilor Terry to refer those motions as a group to the Finance Committee. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous.
Just a question.
Yes.
What are these, like, North Suburban Home Special Revenue?
Mr. McKenna?
That goes back to some of those deficit accounts that we've been cleaning up over the last couple of years. Those are the three accounts that still have a deficit balance and that's draining our free cash every year, so by clearing them out, that issue will go away.
It's not suburban, yeah.
No, it's, that's a grant. It's a grant that was overspent a while back. We've been carrying a small deficit on it, and now we're cleaning it up.
What do you mean overspent? We spent more money on it than we were supposed to, and this money coming out of the gap?
Or it might have been a timing issue in terms of when the expenditure hit, so. These have been program year deficits, and if you, you'll find these in some grant areas. And while we might have cleaned up the matter, the subsequent year, the deficit still hangs on our books, so we...
Will we be taking $10,000 from some pocket and bringing in another one?
Precisely.
Whose pocket is the $10,000 coming from?
Identified sources where we feel we can lower those bathtubs to fill these bathtubs and fix this deficit, so we don't have that dragging anymore, year in and year out, on our books as deficits. Because we take a charge for them every year. We don't need to.
I was just curious, whose pocket that one? Any other questions? If not, all those in favor of transferring, say aye. I mean of referring to Finance. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, unanimous. Thank you. Mr. McKenna? Yes. The ordinance Grover's Ave parking should be meted during the months of May through September during the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. A meter charge of 25 cents per 15 minutes will be charged, violates the ordinance, shall be subject to a parking enforcement penalty of $40. Comment?
Yes, the issue of the parking lot behind the Dow River Apartments has come up. Now that, this is, file this under the question, you know, if they, if you build it, they will come. We are building a very wonderful regional asset in the New Beach on Wiltup Shore Drive. The sense is that not just Winterbrook folks will be looking to utilize that beach, where are they going to park? Our feeling is that since we planned this parking facility in anticipation of the challenge of trying to park cars and, you know, invite people in the region to use this asset, and perhaps, you know, while they're here, spend a little money at our stores and eat in our restaurants and whatnot, we're trying to find a way to accommodate these folks and have beach parking dedicated for the beach. We have made some significant improvements in the neighborhood. Crest Ave and the parking back there, I think will remain, will continue to have, you know, those, that business district and that neighborhood well-served by the increase of, how many parking spaces in Crest Ave have we added?
It's around 40.
I think it's 44, because we counted the numbers, the numbers of spots on the street, and they duplicated it during the non-street.
That was total.
Yeah.
That was new, 44 now?
The point is that we've added to the total of available parking in the area, but recognizing that, you know, we want to be able to invite folks in to utilize the beach, but also spend a little dollars while they're here. Beach parking is going to be in a premium, and it will be a problem in the neighborhood unless we dedicate a space for it. And to do that effectively, to monitor it, police it effectively, means it's gotta be available. How do other communities do that? They do it through a meter box. They say to folks, you want to come in, you want to spend time in, at our beach, you want to have a parking space to do it, here's the dedicated space for that. And, you know, to make sure it's fair and available for everyone, there's a meter charge that goes along with using that space for however long you stay at the beach. The lot will be available for the neighborhood during the evening hours and during the wintertime. But, you know, we feel it's time that the town dedicate and identify, you know, appropriate parking for beach use. And it's really as much for managing those conditions as it is for any other reason, okay? We want to make sure that we can accommodate people and say to folks, if they come in and they get a ticket because they're parked in someone's, someone's, someone else's area, that there is a place for that purpose. It's this lot. Don't be parking in front of somebody else's, in front of a restaurant, or in front of a, you know, a person's property or whatnot. We'll have challenges, and this is, I think, a, you know, a limited attempt at trying to address that. It doesn't go far enough, because we don't have enough parking, but it's a start.
Councilor McKenna?
Yes, Jim, my question is, this parking that you're proposing, is this gonna be limited just June, July, and August, say, for the three months in the summer?
It's meant for the beach season.
The beach season?
Yeah.
So it will reflect the residents in the area for parking, you know, snow emergencies and things like that during the day or at night or whatever? This is strictly gonna be a summer?
It's for the beach.
May through September. May through September.
People go to the beach in May.
May 1st to October 1st, it says.
Does it? Mine says May through September.
I've noted, because that's what they do in most beaches, they do it at May through September, because people stretch the season if they can. But, you know, it's intended to be something that, where we can make a level of effort towards managing the beach parking challenge that we certainly will get, and have an identified area where the public can go and park their car. We see the problem at Euro Beach. We know that beaches are going to attract folks with cars. If we don't provide for it, we don't have any excuses when everybody's running all over Kingdom Come, parking wherever they want to, okay? And this is an effort for us to be able to say, this is where you park if you're coming to Winterbrook to enjoy the beach. And yes, you have to pay for it. And yes, it leaves it available for the neighborhood during the night and during snow emergencies and during the winter.
Just a point of clarification, it says Grover's Ave parking. Did you want to put in the word parking lot as opposed?
Parking lot, yeah.
Yeah, because it sounds like it's the whole of Grover's Ave.
No, it's meant to be that lot that we built.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes?
I take a motion to refer to economic development and, you know, possibly rules, start economic development.
Do I have a motion?
Yes.
Motion, second.
Motion has been made by Councilor Delvento, seconded by Councilor Callow, to refer to rules and economic, so a combination of rules and economic development.
I was gonna say, actually, I'd rather see it economic development first, and then if it comes out positive, then go to rules.
How about if we just refer to economic development?
That'd be better.
So your motion reads that, this motion will be referred to economic development?
Yes.
Any comment?
Yeah. Really? So, here we go. I really feel that we should be addressing this for the entire town and not just one neighborhood. And it turns out that after so nicely bringing this up, one neighborhood it shows up and it's my neighborhood.
Yeah, be careful when you take out the flyswatter, because you're gonna find a fly to swat. And, you know, I'll be honest with you, I am for this, but I have none of Councilor Callow's kind thoughts about, you know, it being open for the rest of the time. I believe it should be a nighttime parking lot. I have actually sat down there.
Only nighttime parking lot?
No, no, no. A nighttime ability to buy or rent or lease your spot in that area. I've been down there, I've accosted the people who are now parking there for free, and I have said to them in a non-stocking manner, what is your thought about you being able to have this spot in the sense of being able to know that you can leave your car there every night? And every person I have talked to in that particular area finds it a great relief, because right now, and I did this, I worked in town, when you find a parking spot, when you go into the city and you know where the free spots are, you go to them, and right now, but it's always, am I gonna get it the next day? These are people who are using the spots and want to know they can use the spots. And I think throughout the town, there are people who won't look at this as a $400, $500 fee. They'll look at it as a peace of mind, and we should be taking that thought into consideration and making a parking proposal, not just for this lot, but for the entire town. We could generate some revenue, which I have offered in the past to the seniors, I've offered it to the school department, and I think that this could be done for someone, that this could be revenue from, there are 14 lots in town?
Yes.
There could be, if there's 20 spaces, there's 300 spaces at $400. We're talking real money.
Mr. President? Okay. My suggestion is that we, that you bring this up with the Economic Development Committee.
That was gonna be my sentiment, is that would be the perfect opportunity to get a presentation before economic development is done.
Okay, so we have a motion to take the Grover's Ave parking lot, be meted parking during the months of May through September during the hours of 8 to 6 daily, a meter charge of 25 cents per 15 minutes will be charged, violates the ordinance, shall be subject to parking enforcement penalty of $40. And we have a motion to refer to Finance, to economic development. Any discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, unanimous. Motion number two on that same subject is that the Council appropriate $12,000 from the Capital Stabilization Fund for the purposes of procuring, and should we have a motion to refer that also to economic development?
Yes, yes.
Motion by Councilor Delvento, seconded by Councilor Terry to refer it to economic development. Any discussion? Councilor May.
I don't understand why it would have to go to economic development, it's an expense, not an economic boom, and if they would decide to do it, it would be moved, because then we'd need to think about the cost of the entire plan.
Mr. President?
It's a cost issue. If economic development thinks it's a good idea, they would know the cost, but they wouldn't be discussing it as an element of their work, in my mind.
Mr. President? Okay, yes, Councilor Delvento?
The concept phase should be done, economic development, and again, if coming up positively, we go to Finance, as previously, we go to Rules.
Okay. All those in favor of referral to economic development, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous?
No, no.
Eight to one, sorry.
You guys spoke against doing it, it's that way. Am I not wrong?
No, no.
Did not just speak against, did?
Economic development first, then we'll, then Finance. If it doesn't clear economic development, then it's not going to Finance.
Well, we take the vote. All those in favor of referring to economic development, this funding piece of it, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So it's eight, it's seven to one.
We should have loved him.
The Council, the next motion, that the Council amend the following changes to the town fee schedule to make the, to reflect the changes made to Chapter 1048. Could you, there's supposed to be a motion ahead of that.
Yes.
Right, I did it backwards, I'm sorry. We had a motion that I do not have a copy of in front of me, that was two. There was a series of parking enforcement requests, and I would honor a motion to refer those requests for changes to rules and ordinance. Do I have a motion? Motion by Councilor Terry, seconded by Councilor Sanford. All those in, any discussion? Not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous?
I just ask a question.
Sure.
That is then not going to affect the fact that these were still far February, don't we in February?
Schedule.
Oh, they send out the note cards, so we're not gonna send out a note to people to add $5 if they want to for their parking status?
If this gets passed before the end of February, when we send out, if there's action on this before the end of February, when we send out the excise tax bill, a notice will go into the bill indicating the change.
I thought the excise tax came out before the end of February.
Mid to late February.
But, you're looking to change it so that they pay from January to December.
Right. But not to 2016.
Changing, changing from fiscal year to calendar year. So instead of being July through June, it'll be January through December. So for the first year.
And the CFO, do you think that helps us in our budget preparation?
I think it, there's an awful lot of effort that goes into collecting these fees at the current rate of $5. We want to get to an online process and implement something where folks can go online, and we're proposing that it be free of charge if it's online, but that would be up to the council if they want to make that decision. If they're going to still pay for it, they can still pay for it online.
Another quick.
I just wanted to add, if I might, Council President?
Yes, go ahead.
And I believe you were wondering who, how people are affected if they buy a sticker between now and when this change was in effect, is that what I heard?
Yeah, either six month or eighteen month.
Of notifying and collecting it, right? Now, goes out February, the day, June. Now, when we're doing all the other tax collecting, in January, all the licenses, are they gonna put this on the same day that they're gonna be filing?
Well, there'll have to be a carryover provision in the ordinance that recognizes whenever you buy in this year, that it'll be good.
whenever you buy in this year, that it'll be good through the end of the year, such that everyone can get on the same calendar when they purchase together on a calendar year basis.
So that first six months will be free?
Yeah.
Tim?
Yeah, that's exactly right. So there would be no charge until the fall for the parking permit.
Six months transition.
The excise tax would go out as scheduled with the notice to inform them of the new change.
So, Councilman?
So I have a sticker right now, which is good until June 31st. If we do not do something from July 1st until December 31st with a sticker, do we just enforce the same color sticker that we have? Because that is a, that is a revenue and a protection. I mean, I don't think it's a great revenue to us, but it is a protection, that you know in your neighborhood, it's stickers only. So we have that, you can't just say there's no charge for these six months, because then we lose the enforcement capability, which we struggle to gain.
Okay, any further questions on that motion? Then we have a motion that the town council amend the following changes in the town fee schedule to reflect the changes in chapter 1048, town ordinances regarding president parking program. Do I have a motion to refer?
Motion.
To where?
Rules.
Referring to rules. Councilor Terry makes a motion, do we have a second?
Can I hear?
We have a second.
Seconded by Councilor Delvento. All those in favor of referring to rules, say aye.
Aye.
So this is a question, so rules has to come up and adopt this, or have a public hearing and enhance this to whatever way we can.
Great, okay. I have a motion to accept an agreement by and among the City of Rivier and the Town of Winter for Metro North Regional Emergency Communications Dispatch Center. Do I have a motion? You want to comment on it first, Mr. President?
Yes, the council has voted to approve this relationship already. We've had special act authorization through the state as well. This is the final agreement that has been worked on through the two communities, which spells out, you know, the essentials of the relationship. We are eager to get this enacted such that the operation can begin. And the City of Rivier has endorsed the agreement, and I certainly endorse it as well. We've put a lot of sweat equity into this. It's regional E-911 for those at home who may not be familiar with what we're addressing. It's profoundly important for the community to be able to meet the standards required for appropriate dispatch of public safety services for the community. And we can do them in a regional way through the City of Rivier and provide the kinds of medical and linguistic and other professional level attention people expect to get now in terms of an emergency 911 phone call. It's important, and in fact, there are mandates that require that we have adequate professional line providers of that service. When you are in an unfortunate way and you're on the phone, you expect to be given information immediately for what your condition is. It's important that we have that capacity, and we can do it, we can't do it alone. We really find that it's important that we merge with a regional entity that enables us to be able to provide that at a marginal cost basis that makes sense for us based on our call line. And not have to build that capacity within the community and really not have an extremely expensive marginal cost for that service.
Do you want to speak on that, Chief?
Sure, but after the special act was passed, there was, the IMA came before the special act, there was a legal question whether or not the old IMA would survive any challenges. Legal advice, we spoke on a page who actually drafted this IMA, met, or directed meetings with us to go over it line by line, come up with the final draft, that parrot would be acceptable to parrot, and also acceptable to the chapter 41 of the treasuries, to borrow money and to write checks out of the legal dispatch accounts separately from the City of Rivier and the Town of Winter.
Okay, could I have a motion to accept? Motion? motion by Councilor Delvento, seconded by Councilor Calhoun. Any discussion on the motion? No?
I would add that your motion authorizes me to sign the agreement.
We've already found it.
Yes.
Yeah, we. Probably the town manager to enter into the agreement.
Right.
It's already operating?
Belts and suspenders, it's operating. It's still best.
The motion?
It'll switch in about four months.
To accept an agreement, to accept the agreement by and among the City of Rivier and the Town of Winter for the Metro North Regional Emergency Communications District and Dispatch Center, and authorize the town manager to enter into such agreement. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Synonymous, thank you. Under Article 9, Section 6, it's time to review the ordinance, I think you should have done a committee last time, the charter and the ordinances. And I am going to set up a committee, I just would like to have a more confidence from the council that they're aware of it, and to move to set up the committee. So I have a motion to go ahead to set up the ordinance review committee.
Motion.
motion by Councilor Terry, seconded by?
Second.
by Councilor Delvento, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Synonymous, and if you have any suggestions, I've already talked to a few people who aren't before, if you have any suggestions, please let me know, Councilor Calhoun and Eliot? No?
No, it wasn't on the list.
Well, so if you guys would like to be on it again, or if you have any suggestions for any citizens, I would rather.
Can I ask a question? Is it illegal to send out an email about this through, you know, through the school system? And the reason I ask that, and I know it's not a school thing, but they have the best access, from my understanding, because their iPad machine knows things they're doing through their Twitter. They have a real bulk of people that I don't know that we get, and I don't know what our capabilities of cross-doing, but we help out, you know, on their side of the street, throw a few things there. Maybe they could send home an email on the Chromebooks. And, because this is the type of thing that would be of great interest, I think, to new people. I know you've talked to some people on the charter committee before, but you get down into the weeds in that, you know, one through six, one through eighth grader, that's where you get a lot of new people in town that haven't been a park, and get them, you know, you look at Jim Daviano, his parents got him into this at a young age, and being right and doing the right thing. And we can get to this newer group of people that are coming in. I thought we could cackle a couple of half a dozen people that would be interested in putting a little input into the town.
Okay, see what you can find out, but getting weird out.
I don't know what they can.
There's a small committee policy with respect to communications through?
Yeah, there is.
Through the children. So I think you'd have to address that board to see if they would support it, unless they did a connected call.
What's that?
If they did a connected call, they could call.
Yeah, I just need to be, you know, I know you've sent out about 5,000 emails, but you have a whole big thing, somebody's gotta go through it. You're getting it every week, I don't know if everybody's getting through the whole thing. And I'm just thinking, how do we get out a quick message? You know, how do we capture, I like Tim's idea on the parking sticker, because we're gonna capture, what, I think we have, what, 2,500 cars or 5,000 cars or something? Is it 5,000 cars?
5,000 paid.
5,000 paid, then we had 1,250 that we gave out of the good graces of our heart for reaching a particular age.
Okay, so if you can come up with some way to get that out, the more coverage we get, the better. The next is, I have an appointment of Miriam Regan Fiori to the Citizens Advisory Finance Committee. I'd like to appoint Miriam, and I would like to have a motion to affirm her appointment. Motion? Motion by Councilor Delvento, seconded by? Councilor Boncorri. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Synonymous.
Councilor Boncorri, you guys know the thing on business.
Okay.
And that is to pass a motion coming out of the Rules Committee, that we amend Rule 7 of the Winterp rules and procedures by deleting the current Rule 7 and putting in place there a new Rule 7, which is an exact copy of section 21, executive section rules of Master Laws, Chapter 38.
Motion coming from committee, does not require a second. Any discussion on the motion? Not, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Synonymous, thank you for taking care of that.
And a motion to direct the county, the clerk, to update town website with these additional changes. There's been two other changes that we made that haven't gone on yet, so they need to be updated completely.
So maybe we could have Denise request that, well, she could probably request the clerk of the town clerk.
Can you do that yourself, Phil?
Well, Phil? She can request the clerk of the town clerk to do it.
I have a request in the future, when you're making your recommendations for appointments, to maybe ask that person to attend the meeting so that the council can see who these people are.
Sure. The only thing I would do, I would request that I would have the opportunity to do it at the beginning of the meeting.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
That'd be nice, yes.
Yeah, because I thought of, I've thought of that in the past, but thought of having them hang around for the whole meeting, but yeah, we could do that, that's a good idea. And I would like a motion, the request that we had on the SDOD regarding 17 Walden Street, the General Law 48 says that the council shall consider the petition and refer it to the planning board with no action, but it must be done within 14 days of the receipt of the petition. I received it last Friday. In order to get it to them within 14 days, we would either have to make that motion to refer it to them tonight, I'll call a special meeting between now and?
Mr. President?
Yeah.
With all due respect, how it's filed, and I'm just going out of curiosity for the 14-day count, if you got it on Friday, which town hall was closed? And Monday was a holiday, town hall was closed, it couldn't technically be received until today on a timestamp. So, I mean, I'm just trying to see if that would give us the 14 days for our next meeting, which will be in 14 days.
I weighed that out, and my understanding is that it was delivered to me via email, and it's not clear that it wasn't delivered to the town clerk. So in other words, my erring on the side of caution is that I've had it since Friday, even though town hall was closed, the 14-days count, the 14-days mount, it's not 14, my understanding, is that it's not 14 workdays, it's 14 calendar days. So given that, even if, even if we said that we received it today, that would give us the 14 days till the next week. But I'm not comfortable saying we received it today.
Well, isn't it stamped?
It is. It was not stamped, I received it. I received it in the form of an email, but I did receive it on Friday night, so.
So if it's not stamped from the town clerk?
Council, what's your take on that?
Do we have to refer it to the planning board anyway?
We do.
So we might as well amend the rule and send it today?
That's what I think, because, yeah. We don't, we don't? Yeah, we need to, a motion to amend the rule, and I don't have the rule up yet, I think it's too secret.
It is too B.
Too B.
That was close.
All right, motion to amend Rule 2B.
Wave. Wave Rule 2B.
To waive Rule 2B, I'm sorry, to waive. Is there any discussion on the, or can I have a motion? Motion by Councilor Terry, seconded by? Can't hear, seconded by Councilor Sanford? Any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
No.
Okay, we have waived the rule, and now could I have a motion to refer the, a motion by Councilor Terry, seconded by Councilor Sanford? To, the motion will be to refer the petition regarding 17 Walden Street application for SDOD to the planning board. Motion been made, seconded. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Synonymous, thank you. Public comment. Stick your name and address, please.
Good evening, my name's Faruchu Romeo.
Address, please.
Sorry?
Your address?
I'm an employee of the town. I don't live in Winterp.
Then you're not, you're not allowed to speak in public comment. Public comment is for citizens of Winterp.
Not employees.
Citizens of Winterp.
Employees can't speak?
If they're a citizen, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Moving on to upcoming events?
We have another.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, public comment.
I'm Deborah June, 550 Pleasant Street Precinct 2. I spent the last year or more going to public meetings by virtue of the House votes. And I was unfortunately distracted by a personal emergency that occurred last week, but didn't notice that for some reason this whole issue had shown up in rules and ordinances. The last meeting we went to of the planning committee, and there were many, the vote of the planning committee was that they were gonna come to town council and ask for money to hire a specialist in zoning matters, so that the planning committee could continue to consider the results of its very long and detailed study of this issue, with lots of public input. I just wonder how this ended up, in rules and ordinances, without, you know, really notifying anybody, including myself, who spent hours participating in this process, doing research for the committee, writing reports, making statements, coming to meetings and meetings, and suddenly, there was something that appears to have been akin to a hearing in a committee that, I'm sorry, my whole condo is flooded last week, and, you know, they don't have a place to live, but, you know, I missed that. So it just seems to me very striking that the plan was suddenly changed. And the only people notified were the people in the House votes who haven't been coming during the year, and those of us who've been coming didn't realize or understand that this is a tragedy that we have. So I wonder if anybody can possibly explain to me how it shifted like that over Christmas vacation.
Public comment is for public comment, but I will just say that it went through the procedure, the recommendations came back from the planning board, and the standard procedure is when something comes back to the planning board, it goes to the council, then it's referred to rules and ordinances. There was, it was clearly pointed out at the meeting, at the council meeting, it was rules and ordinance, it was referred to rules and ordinance, and then it was, it was rules and ordinances posted and published in the meeting. Councilor?
Just to make it clear, we received a very thick package from the planning board with suggestions on putting together some rules and regulations and bylaws for House votes, living boards, summer living boards, permanent living boards, all those different categories, people that stay on their vote. It's probably gonna take quite some time to, first of all, set up definitions as to what the different categories are, and then what, if any, additional kind of rule to put in on each of those categories. That's why I made my comment, it's gonna probably take us until May to get this done. We would like your input, if you have suggestions, please get them to me. What we're doing now is we're trying to collect rules and ordinances from all the other towns that do allow House votes, and take a look at what they have and see what fits our needs and what doesn't fit our needs, including the need and the input of the people that are allowing them House votes. So, you'll say, I'll submit, please.
I'm David Gelsin, 550 Pleasant Street Precinct 2. Can I ask a question, which is, what are the procedures gonna be, and are there gonna be further public hearings and opportunities to discuss these matters in public? Or is that phase over?
Council, if you want to explain that.
No, sure, every single meeting that we have, as we're trying to develop this in rules and ordinances, the public is invited to, and they can come and give us their input. We'll probably be meeting once a month on this issue.
And Mr. President, then? Before anything is passed, we would have a public?
Yeah, before we have anything passed.
After they go through their whole process, which is an open process, then before it's actually adopted, they'll be publicated.
And there will be notice of those meetings, those monthly hearings? They're all this?
Yeah, they're on the town website all the time, at least 48 hours notice by statute. Yes, Deborah?
And if the zoning for the Atlantis Marina, the permits called for the Marina to be closed in the winter, is that a matter that's gonna be referred to the House votes of the Atlantis Marina? Marina in particular as a, are you trying to amend the zoning?
No.
Permits for the Atlantis Marina?
No.
Bring this whole thing?
No, wait.
So our permits say the marina will be closed in the winter for that development. Say the marina will be closed in the winter. And that's what they said. So I'm, we've been wondering through this whole process, where is the, everyone's talking about the people at the Atlantis Marina. They came on some emergency, the emergency is over. The permits for our development say the marina will be closed in the winter. When and where do we go to get the specific question of the violation of the permits for our development dealt with? It doesn't seem to me Rules and Ordinances, you're going to deal with the houseboats in the town of Winthrop. But everybody's talking about the houseboats at the Atlantis Marina. They violate the permits for the development of the Atlantis Marina. And we don't know how council is going and when council or someone in the town is going to deal with the fact that the houseboats are not allowed, boats are not allowed in the winter at the Atlantis Marina, unless you want to change the rules under which the development was made and people bought things there relying on the permits for the development. When and where does that go?
It has to go to enforcement. See, the council will not, the enforcing agency, we set up bylaws and we didn't set those rules. The planning board set any rules that went along with the development of that project and the marina. If they put special, uh, variances on the use of that, the planning board did that and not the council. So.
Right. So we're just asking, how do we enforce the rules?
Mr. McKenna, should you comment?
Yes. We, through our building inspector and building commissioner, they are zoning enforcement officers of the town. They've issued cease and desist orders against anyone operating in any way those, um, residences as functioning, um, B and Bs or, or whatever they were doing in the past. Um, that doesn't mean that we can kick out them as vessels.
No, I'm just saying.
So they are there, but they are not supposed to be doing things that violate the zoning or the permit as proposed. Now, if, if closed means no vessels, that's a, that's a, that's a definitional issue between, uh, the building commissioner and the, and the person who holds that permit. Um, you know, the, the argument is that they are vessels. Uh, and so, you know, it's a, it's a challenge right now to, to, you know, uh, split hairs over that issue. But, uh, but we have issued cease and desist orders against them functioning in any other capacity other than as a vessel.
Yeah. We appreciate your cease and desist orders for the bed and breakfast, though they, they ignored those. What I understand is more fundamental. The permits for the Atlantis Marina say that the marina will be closed in the winter. Closed means closed. It doesn't mean vessels are going to be, it means closed.
May I?
Yes.
Yes, please.
You have a right, isn't it, to file an action in court to enforce your special permit?
Councilor Devento?
I was hoping for a more, um, community approach. And we've been participating in this whole process, and yet it's being treated as though the town can just decide to have houseboats. Well, that's fine. You can decide whatever you want and we can participate, say what our experience has been. But in our particular development, the permits say that Marina will be closed in the winter. Somebody, I hope we don't have to debate this. Somebody needs to think about that for us because it's not right. We bought places there. We looked, Marina will be closed in the winter. Fine. You can't just change it.
Okay. Thank you. We'll look.
We're not changing.
We're not.
It's the, the owner of the development, condo association not going forward and enforcing it. It, it is nothing that we personally can do about it as a council.
It's a town planning requirement, a town agency issue to permit.
Yes.
Not the condo association.
Okay. We will, we will look into it, to what our responsibility and our ability is to enforce there. All right. Councilor Devento, did you hear that?
No.
Okay. Moving on. Is there any further public comment? If not, um, just a couple of reminders that, um, as Mr. McKenna mentioned Thursday, the grand opening of the Feldman Seaside Apartments. On, uh, Friday night, the Chamber of Commerce, uh, annual awards dinner. On Saturday night, there's a dinner honoring Richard Honer. And on Sunday, um, the fundraiser at the Larson Rink for Sabrina Feudop, in memory of Sabrina Feudop, a young girl who passed away recently. They're having a fundraiser at the Larson Rink from 3:00 to 6:00 on Sunday. And Councilor Teary, would you like to comment on the 50th anniversary of Winthrop Hockey?
Yeah. Winthrop Hockey, um, Winthrop High School Hockey Boosters are running a celebration to honor 50 years of hockey in Winthrop, Winthrop High School. Uh, and it will be an all-day event. The high school is playing Gloucester at 2:00 o'clock down at the rink. Uh, that will be followed at 4:00 by, uh, an alumni game. And that will be followed by, at 6:30, um, there's a change of venue. There'll be a celebration at the Winthrop Yacht Club at 6:30. Um, tickets are $15. Um, there'll be a split apart. There'll be some, uh, auction there also. Um, alumni will be able to try to purchase their own jerseys. Um, but it is a great celebration honoring 50 years of hockey in Winthrop, and I encourage people to attend.
Mr. Date?
The date is a Saturday night. It's a very busy weekend in Winthrop.
Yeah.
It's also January 24th, Saturday night, 6:30 to, uh, 11:00, I believe, at the Winthrop Yacht Club. Tickets are $15 and it's run by the Winthrop High School Hockey Boosters.
If there is no further business, could I have a motion?
No.
Motion by Councilor Sanford.
Did you have something? Yeah. I just wanted to congratulate our chief of police, Delante, um, for the honor of being named, uh, and being awarded the Town Service Awards from the Chamber of Commerce. Congratulations.
The team effort inside the building and outside the building. I appreciate the support and friendship of Steve Calla, Paul Fling, especially works, uh, constantly with town manager and the council, and we look forward to, um, continuing to moving forward the community and some of these social issues. Thank you.
Congratulations, Chief.
Congratulations, your father.
And also to Mrs. Latiri, uh, who's being awarded at the.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry.
Oh, that's. I didn't get anything.
Congratulations to all of the recipients, actually. Jim was good.
Okay. Hold on. Who's the other?
Second.
Oh, Sergeant Rogers is.
Right. And just, not to, not to forget, we did name all the award recipients.
We did, yes. We did name them all last time.
We haven't forgotten.
I wasn't here.
No, no. But a separate recognition just a few nights before.
Right. Yeah.
So the chief, Steve Rogers and, and Mrs. Latiri. Now, the motion by Councilor Sanford.
Oh, is it one of them? Yeah, sorry.
Motion to adjourn. Motion by Councilor Maroni. Well, should we call him Devento or Boncorri? Boncorri. Councilor Boncorri has made a motion to adjourn. Again, we have a second by Councilor Latiri. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Yeah, we're up to me.